We are live.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to call and order our work session for the general fund budget. Today's date is April 12th, 2021. And our first agenda item is the Berlin Fire Company. And we'll give an overview of the fire company and EMS requests. So I'm going to turn it over to David Fitzgerald, President, and R.J. Rose, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. So this sheet I have first, and he wants to tell you Berlin Fire Company in bold print. So this is just our cover letter. In the past, during the work session, we've just given a brief overview. And the town administrators reminded me to try to stay here no greater than 15 minutes to keep everybody on schedule. And usually, we come back and meet with the mayor, the town administrator, and a couple of council people as a working committee. That's what we've done in the past. Again, I don't know what the new mayor and council have in mind, but that's what we have done in the past. So the Berlin Fire Company overview. Again, just the cover letter reminds you that 43% of our fire rescue calls are at the town limits. Cover letter also provides how we provide these services to the town with our volunteers supported by our career staff. And it makes mention of the summary of the second page. And I'll go over the second page briefly. But we need to get back up to the $250,000 hour fire funding, which is an additional $84,715 for operations. And we've spoken before about a one-time capital cost for self-contained breathing apparatus. And we're getting an update quoted on that. So that's going to be looking at us in the next fiscal year of $400,000. And as we've spoken before, we will try to find grants for some of this self-contained breathing apparatus. Other parts have been successful, we think will be successful, but it hasn't funded 100%. So we'll work on that. And...
I'm sorry, Mr. Fitzgerald. Is the 97.5, is that what you're talking about, the new fire apparatus?
No.
Is that the SCBA?
No, that's not even a budget, because that's an additional one-time capital cost of $400,000. That's not even listed. I'm going to go to page two.
Okay.
So page two, what we have given the town in the past is the top part is the revenues. And the second section is the expenses. The first column is to show you that's what we spent in fiscal year 1920. The second column is the 2021 budget. And the third column is the profit-loss, if you will, or revenue versus expenses report up to nine months. Now, we'll qualify that. We don't have all our bills for March. For example, the town electric bill will be coming for March. There'll be other bills, professional fees. We just finished out the audit with PPS, which you should copy that by this week, into this week. That'll add to the professional fees. So I don't want people to look at this and say, "Oh, you're way under budget on such and such and so and so," because we do have a lot of expenses that come in the last quarter of the year, especially as Chief looked at his section earlier, the fire equipment. As in past practice, we wait until the last quarter to buy some of these things, because we're so tight in the budget. What would happen if we would have a large repair? We'd have no funds to fix that. So we wait until the last quarter to purchase some of those items to make sure we do have adequate funding. So, for example, a good category to look at is fire equipment budgeted at $107,700. There's only $44,860, but he has over $30,000 in his fire year on board. So the last column is the FY '21, '22 proposed revenue and expenses. And we do that just like you budget here or you budget at home based on past practice and committees and our officers what is needed for the next year. The 97.5, Commissioner Wors, is new fire apparatus. Our chief engineer has spoken with us about our van and our utility vehicle. Both of those have some age on, $2,000 is the van. And we provided a capital budget back in December to the mayor and council, which hopefully you'll have to copy of that, because I did not duplicate so many yet.
This is both, you said, the van and the...?
The van and the utility. So in the town grant, they did put in the amount like the cover letter says, the 165,25, which is what was published. And the mayor may mention that the tax meeting, the meeting where he's such a tax rate. Flat for fire company. So we need that number, or you can see down to the bottom, we're $84,715. The next page just gives you a description of the revenue and expenses we've charged in each of those accounts. They'll help you understand what you'll learn again when we, again, in work session format, again, we can drill down a little further. And the last page is just a summary page. We have some new council people of the history of the town Berlin's budgets. Budget amount, the amount of change, percent change, percent from 2009. It shows you the ups and downs for the year. And then there was three years, there were restrictions put on all the times.
So from fiscal year nine, fiscal year 12, it is always 342 every year?
For those three years, it was 342.
Each year or a month?
Each year.
Okay.
And then another sheet, uh, we gave you. So that sheet has involved trying to Berlin Fire Company, emergency medical services incorporated. This is for the corporation that provides the emergency medical services and the staffing. And generally, the staffing is cross-streaming to fire rescue services, but it's just run through, personnel's got to be run through one corporation or the other. So these people are cross-streaming to fire rescue services. Just to summarize this cover letter, just a reminder, 57% of the EMS calls are within the town limits. We're providing, you know, free advanced life support ambulances. And what this proposal and these funding requests show on the next pages is to staff two career paramedics and two emergency medical technicians on duty 24 hours a day. Where this has come from is all of the fire companies, Pocimote, Bishopville, all 10, fire chiefs, presidents, EMS captains, and their expertise has come up with a staffing plan, because we all help each other out. When one company is not available, the other company covers. And the busy companies. So Pocimote, Snow Hill, Berlin, Ocean Pines should have this level of staffing. Newark, Shaw, and Bishopville have a large staffing level. They have one crew. And Mission City, five crews. That's what we've talked about with all over 30 people. And this is what we are trying to do in the county to have a strategic planning committee working on that now. They're talking about funding, how this can be funded. So that's something that the town, the American council, is going to have to meet with the county commissioners to talk about cost sharing, who's applicable for what shared. And that's going to be between the county commissioners and American council in each town, not just Berlin, each town. So we work on that. And that's what this budget shows or this revenue and expense document shows. And again, it is at a cost. It's $385,000 additional for operations and a one-time capital cost. We've talked about the cardiac monitors that we showed some of the mayor and councilman staff. They need to be replaced this fiscal year at the $91,000. We do know of a grant that will pay for half of one of those, and we will buy for that, but it would be half of one monitor, because it would be great in view of pressures.
What did you say, I'm sorry? How many did you say total? Two?
Of what?
Two totals that you need, the cardiac...
Cardiac monitors, three. We need one for each ambulance, left together.
So half of one would be around 15?
Two, maybe, yeah, the sounds right. So on page two is the same sheet with the actual is the budget, where we are in nine months. The same applies here. You have some large payouts, like career personnel, the matching funds are paid out at the end of the year for the retirements. And same thing with some repairs that are ready for the summer. And you can just check that on the ambulances and things like that. So as you see that, again, we use the same, left the same number in the town. That's in the published documents. But we are short for this proposal, $477,000, $477,000. And that should provide the service that we're talking about. So again, anything less, it's not that we're not going to provide the service, it's just going to need as many people working. The next page is the revenues and expenses explanations. So you can see what gets charged each account. And the last page is a simpler comparison. You can see the ups and downs of the town budget since FY '12. And then we had one year, there was a restriction on FY '17. So we certainly look forward to providing you some additional information, meeting with you to discuss further how we can continue to serve the town with fire rescue and EMS service.
Tell me, tell me, the increase in career personnel.
Yeah, so right now, we have three people that work on shift at the firehouse, two paramedics and one EMT. So the first ambulance is fully staffed. So when there's the first emergency, the ambulance can go out the door, you know, immediately, 30 to 60 seconds, they can be responding. The second paramedic is there. If we have a second emergency that happens, all that ambulance is doing its thing, take care of the patient, transport to the hospital, disinfect them, not available. That person has to wait for a volunteer. If we don't get a volunteer to respond to the firehouse in three minutes, then another company is alerted. So depending on what area of the town it could be, the north could have maybe Shaw, maybe Newark coming from the south, Mission City from the east, or the Powell from the west. Who's available, Ocean Pines is stuck in there northeast corner. So it was R&amp;D's or Wolf Farms in that part of the town becoming Ocean Pines. So we used to have a fourth person during the day. And with the cutbacks that occurred last year, the additional 27% cut, that position was eliminated, and has been eliminated all year. So we only had three people on shift at the firehouse. So we are proposing to give back to the fourth person, not only daytime, but to have it 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So there's four people there. They can respond. It provides two ambulances to respond to. It also provides the ability to utilize those people, the fire team can utilize those people on the fire scenes. So if you have a fire call, two people could get on the fire truck. Because in the daytime, the volunteers, it's not that they don't want to go, they're just not available. We have a call a few in a week. The volunteers, you know, are working. They're working their full-time job. So it at least gets two people on a fire truck. So only two volunteers need time for it. Something happened, all four volunteers could get on there if the chief decides to deploy that way. But four people provides a very robust service to the community to have four people there. The three people we have there now, we provide the service we can, which is depending on that volunteer for that second ambulance and also for those fire trucks.
So, so how many people additional are we talking about compared to what you have now?
So we have 12 full-time staff now. Then we go to 16 full-time staff.
David, did the fire company apply for PPP funds either round one, round two, or both?
Uh, we are in the process with Bank Mission City in applying for theirs. We have, the first time we inquired, and for whatever reason, City weren't eligible this round. Their counters were eligible, and we should be signing papers on Friday for that. Bank Mission City is assisting us for that.
Can you tell you how much you're eligible for?
I saw a confidential, what do they call it, encrypted email come through today, but I was at work, so I couldn't log in and see what that application looked like. So I'm short on that application.
I have a request of the fire company. There's no question the fire company provides an extremely valuable service to the town and the surrounding area. That said, you're asking for a lot of money here over what we previously have given you. Would you be willing to provide the mayor and council with your latest tax return and a QuickBooks-generated profit and loss and balance sheet so we can get an accurate financial picture of the fire company? We answer to the residents, so I'm asking this because I think we're obligated to have this information so we can make educated decisions.
As I said earlier, by the end of the week, you will have the full audit from PPS. So you will have all those documents by the end of the week from PPS. The town pays for an audit. We just completed that. Because of COVID, we've not been able to handle papers back and forth, but you'll have that by the end of the week, maybe even tomorrow. I signed the papers over the weekend.
Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong. I didn't think we were paying for an audit this time.
We're not...
FY '21.
This is, this is the past year.
Past year, yeah.
But that, that audit will not provide you with the document, with all the documents that you're asking about.
So can we get those in conjunction with PKs?
Yeah, we can provide you up-to-date figures, yes.
I mean, the tax returns and the QuickBooks P&Ls?
The tax returns will be the same that PPS. We do our tax return all in the fiscal year. So we won't do another tax return until next year.
I mean, generally, they submit an audit summary. We don't see the actual tax return from the previous year.
Yeah, well, we include the tax returns, no problem.
All right, thank you.
Now, David, correct me if I'm wrong, but typically, the grant allocation is divided between the fire company and EMS by your organization. If there's, if a grant remains flat at $400,000, how would you like that divided between the Berlin Fire Company and EMS?
No, that's not correct. Normally, that's at your own direction, how you want that split, because we don't know what your decision-making is up here. Since we went to two corporations, that is, that's up here. It's two separate grants, two separate corporations. So however you allow it, David, is how we act as a sponsor. Just like we get from the academy, that's not our decision, that's your decision.
It's my understanding that last year, you were sent an email saying that you have this amount of money. How would you like that split? Is that not accurate?
I will have to look that up. I think when they said when there's been the cuts, they found evenly from both, both entrances.
Well, I do believe the mayor is correct. We asked you how you want your fund split. And I do believe you informed us of what you would like to...
We'll go back and check with Mr. Morris, Mr. Burden. But yeah, either way, we'll make the work, we all agree.
Well, I mean, we would like for you, that you are the experts in the service that you're providing. So we would like for you to tell us how you want that grant split. We don't have a preference on that.
No, we don't.
All right. We'll talk to our board, our membership, and our attorney, our accountant, back to you.
Thank you.
Do you, is it a normal process? Is there another work session with the fire company?
Normally, in the past few years, we have had a working group. It's been the mayor, Mr. Stetson, Mr. Barrell, and Mr. Timber was a council member, and Mr. Turner wasn't, was it not?
So typically, we have, so we have annual contract for services for fire and EMS. And typically, in a closed session, because it is a contract and it's negotiated, that is done in closed session with the fire department's leadership and the mayor and council.
In full.
What's that?
In full.
Yes, in its entirety, and it is not a...
And other questions for President Fitzgerald or Chief R.J. Rose?
Will you be able to share the information contained in that email that you said you couldn't open today?
Yeah, the PPP amount, sure. Yeah, right down there.
Thanks, Dave.
I was at work, that's why I couldn't open it. And the fire company still...
I understand.
Do you have an idea there, David? I do not, I do not. We let the Bank Mission City do that, they were all the experts. I do not. Do you have any insight on that at all?
Well, if the first one wasn't qualified, which I would ask the bank, why they were not qualified? Because the requirements and speculations on the two draws are absolutely the same. So if the fire company qualified for a second, then they should qualify for the first. There is no changes. So I would pursue definitely the second or the first, whichever comes first.
Okay.
And it's a simple calculation. It's your average monthly payroll multiplied by 2.5.
So the first one, the date has already passed, that time has left, right? And we're into the second at this point?
I'm not the expert on that, so I'll check with the Bank Mission City and get back the... That's why we employ accountants and...
I need that correction, you know?
I just wanted it just there.
All right, thank you both.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda item number two. Or number two, I'll provide a statement, and then the town administrator will provide an overview and a statement. And then we'll hear the overview of the general fund revenues, and then go right into the department. So we're here this evening for everybody watching at home to discuss our general fund draft budget with the council and staff present. Since this is a work session, there will be no comments or questions taken from the public during this meeting. If you have a question about a particular line item or would like more information regarding the budget process, you may reach out to any one of the elected representatives here this evening or call Town Hall during normal business hours and ask to speak to the mayor, finance director, or town administrator. The development of the general fund budget began back in February with finance director gathering requests from department heads and projecting our revenues for FY '22. I received my first draft of the budget on February 26th and had to present a formal tax rate for publication in our local newspapers three days later on March 1st. Prior to the official adoption of the tax rate, on March 22nd, I spent hours meeting with our department heads, finance director, and town administrator. The budget that we are discussing this evening encompasses the following: general fund departments in categories: elected officials, administration, finance, customer accounts, building and grounds, police, public works, sanitation, streets, economic development, planning, parks and recreation, and debt service. In a few minutes, like I said, you'll hear from our finance director, who will provide an overview of our FY '22 revenue projections, and then we'll go into each department's expenditures in detail. Town Administrator, please.
Some of the things I'm going to mention may be a little bit redundant, but I think it's good to hear again. First of all, good evening. Let me begin by thanking the council for the strong collaboration, conspiring our resources during the current budget year and past years. In reviewing and ultimately approving the annual budget, you all play a vital role to ensuring that we allocate our resources responsibly. I would also like to recognize and thank the staff members that have worked hard this year to compile and complete various projects. I want to recognize all the hardworking and dedicated department heads who have made special efforts over the past year to measure their progress towards many goals. In particular, thanks goes to Natalie and her staff for the dedicated efforts to assemble this budget. And of course, great thanks to the more than 70 employees that we employed with the town of Berlin. Your commitment to the town of Berlin is what makes this town a success story. We cannot thank you enough. Year after year, department heads have evaluated their needs and have reduced their overall budgets. Again, the mayor had mentioned the general fund encompasses and not limited to elected officials, administration, public works, employees, economic development, planning, finance, customer service, and our parks. The structure of the general fund is a non-fee-based fund. It relies primarily on taxes and our governmental revenues. Drivers of this general fund are the cost of doing business, inflation, and capital cost. In 2020, with CPI, COLA was set at 1.7%. It's important to know this for many reasons. The process as how we've gotten to tonight's draft budget has been very driven and a very focused process. Department heads develop their respective budgets and then submit their requests to Natalie and myself. There are numerous discussions regarding each and every line item. And that includes every number. We then finish the first draft and then present it to the mayor for his input. We then go back to the department heads and try to reunite each department budget. Police know that this draft budget before this evening has been looked at from many different directions and by many different sets of eyes. This draft budget is available via the town's website. And any resident who wants a copy of it, they will be provided this. And again, I remind everyone that this is a draft. The general fund presented before you is balanced. There are revenue projections of 6.8 million and expenditures of the same. We have reduced a number of items from the initial draft to the FY '22 budget. Capital items have been removed, but still listed with either a zero cent or a one cent for evaluation. Basically, that's a placeholder. The major items are a pickup truck for public works, streets projects, a town hall renovation project, audiovisual equipment, some training, recycling, travel for some departments. As an FYI, to you and to the citizens of this town, we still continue to operate with one less headcount at town hall that will be authorized. We are also operating without a director of public works. As an FYI, that, I think that is critical, because the staff, I use layman's terms, they've sucked it up and doing things with less. Last year, at the same time, the council member Barrell, I remember a comment from him very clearly. Last year, we made a proposal to the council that we were going to cut our cleaning contractor. So who cleans the building minus the restrooms right now? You're looking at it. Well, you are only... And so again, another cut that employees have made. Major capital items in this draft are two police vehicles, a street sleeper, a new roof for the planning building, windows for town hall, and new roofs for the pavilions at Stevie DeGater and Henry Park. With the increased COLA, I'm asking the mayor and council to consider some sort of a nominal increase to our employees' base salaries. I want to make it clear that our employees come to work every day, and they are grateful for their jobs. Today, as an example, did not plan it with the council member there. I picked him up to go look at something, and lo and behold, I had an army of employees that reacted to something over Stevie DeGater Park. And all I had to show, I take fault for that, because it was overkill. But my point is, they were called, they reacted, they did their jobs, okay? I can assure each of you that we have a dedicated group of employees that all have the best interests of the town when they come to work on a daily basis. No money is spent unless it's approved by one of the folks that's in this room and talking about the department heads. We do a very good job of managing our budget. Yes, of course, there are unplanned and unexpected expenses. This past week, citizens of this town, and you all witnessed something that I know is not fun for our public works group. And my hat goes all to Jimmy Charles and the entire team, because last week, as I heard from a lot of citizens, it was pretty cool seeing the old-fashioned way the trash is being picked up. How many trash cans?
About 2,200 trash cans.
So, and then the part on the truck, because I was asked this question, why didn't you plan for that part failing? I don't know where to begin to plan for a hydraulic part when it's going to fail. That part cost?
$4,500.
So we have a $4,500 expensive. We did not anticipate, okay?
It was a, it was a non-maintenance part, which means it's not something we grieve or do on a regular basis. It was a mechanical issue that could not be avoided.
So we did, we did fix it, and it's back up. And that's getting way offline, but unplanned expenses. I'm also asking the mayor and council to reinstate loan allowances for the FY '21 levels. And I'm also asking the mayor to, yeah, so I'm imploring you, please, with the three employees that we have, the three lines of vehicle allowances, I would appreciate it very much if that is rolled into salary. To sustain the best services provided to the town and to continue to have minimum turnover, I'm asking that we recognize this employee group, and I only ask that we keep our wages on par with COLA. No cost more, toilet paper costs more. And if we do not do something for the employee group, I firmly believe professionally that we're taking a step backwards. That concludes my introduction.
Thank you.
Next up is revenue projections from Natalie Fleek.
Great, ma'am. As was mentioned before, the estimated for preliminary budget general fund for fiscal 2021... As was mentioned before, the estimated for preliminary budget, general fund, fiscal '22, 6.8 million, which is an increase of $511,000 from fiscal '21, the budget that we have right now currently in place. I'm just going to go briefly through the line items just to have an overview and understanding which each revenue line item consists of. As we all aware, general fund relies greatly on the real estate tax projections, and the number that you have for fiscal '22 projections is based on the increase which was passed in the prior meeting of 81.5 cents per hundred. So the estimated preliminary fiscal '22 revenue projections is $3,780,000. It's an increase of $200,000 and consists of not only the per cents, per hundred cents increase, but also an increase of the assessed value base, and this is from year to year. We also have intergovernmental revenues here. Those are pretty much state grants and the county grants. We have our big county grant, and I think I'm jumping, but it is on page two. So I'm going to be referencing the pages so it'll be easier to follow. Our normal projected amount per year received from the county grant is $465,000. It's unrestricted general fund grant. For fiscal '22, there were additional requests made for Rails and Trails of $39,000, community center feasibility study, fireworks, and Worcester County grant itself. That will bring us to $517,375, which is 11% increase. We also have a facade grant in the general fund revenues, and it is on page...
Can you look for it?
Facade grant.
Page two. It's just about that now.
Yes, I'm sorry, facade grant, right about that. So the structure of facade grant is on a reimbursable basis, and it's estimated to be $50,000. The structure is that the local businesses can apply to improve the facades or the business structure outside and request to be reimbursed from that amount. Now, the $25,000 is earmarked in our administration under the capital project for town hall windows. The 25 will be going to the businesses. Now again, this is a projection. We have several building permits that was estimated and projected with the help of Dave Engelhardt. We go over the numbers what was in the past and trying to look into the future years and see how many permits he is planning to issue, what are the impact fees would be, and et cetera. But the changes are minimum, so I'm not going to go line by line. On page one, there was a question, what is in lieu of tax? So that is a contribution from the electric fund, and lieu of real estate tax would be assessed on the power plant and the equipment, heavy equipment that is inside. The projection was reduced by half, as was discussed in the prior meetings with mayor and town administrator. So basically, it is a transfer of funds or contribution from, and the advice here is to reduce it in two phases. Phase one would be the next year fiscal '22 reduction by half, and then phase N completely out in fiscal '23.
Why is that being reduced?
The concept of the contribution from electric fund is that basically, we hold the ownership of the power plant as a town for many years. The value of the power plant on the books is at the cost that was recorded many, many years ago. So some of it is fully depreciated, some of it already doesn't exist as equipment and been replaced. But we continue calculation. So basically, the electric fund subsidizes $180,000 each year back to general fund. We're trying to close that concept and get away from that.
But by reducing it, the electric fund could use that money, keep that money for capital improvement?
Correct.
So just to add a little clarity on that, the, this principle dates back, I think, to the 1970s, and it's using the book value of the asset, like Natalie said, which is about $16 million, which brings the total drag on the electric fund to about $184,000 of the new tax rate. So this is the only utility fund or any entity of the town of Berlin that pays real estate taxes back to the general fund. And what that's doing is taking a fund that's already hurting and taking $184,000 of working capital from it to be able to reinvest in property, plant, and equipment. So it's something that should not really be on the books and needs to be rolled back. $184,000 is a lot to do in one year, so we're proposing to do that over too.
And thanks for that question.
You can also see a little reduction of the highway user revenue. Actually, it's not a reduction, but a reduction from originally the amount that was received from the state highway user administration. The projection was a $213,000. We normally try to be on a conservative size to estimate what would be collected in reality, and while looking at the trend what was received in fiscal '21 as of right now and projections for fiscal '21, the decision was to reduce the estimated revenue of a highway user fund fees to $113,000, $190,000. So with that said, the highway user revenue intention is to cover street projects or capital projects for public works and streets expenses. We have planned to purchase a street sweeper, and the estimated cost of that as of right now is $255,000. You will see it later in the street department capital outlay items. To cover the gap between the estimated highway user revenues and what needed to purchase a sweep, a street sweeper, the advice is to advance the impact fees from the prior years and to cover the difference. If you look on page three, you will see a line item under number 3871 called contribution from reserves, the total amount of $169,310, which consists of the advancement from the impact fees of $141,810 for the street sweeper and the community center, which I will cover in a little bit by going to... No, it will be in administration under capital outlay. It would be studied community center, not under that. So I'm trying to see what else we can... The general overhead line items on page two, those are very drafted and estimated. I have changed them according to what I have in place right now for the utility funds. But to give a brief overview, the general overhead contribution from water steward and electric is a reimbursement to general fund from utility funds for elected admin finance and planning benefit salaries based on a calculation of a percent how each utility funds closes the budget for each of, at the end of the year, or mean projected year fiscal '22 year. We have parks and recreation grant estimated to be received on page three. That is going to be a specific parks project as an offset for that. And slots revenues also is no impact on the budget because the amount that's projected to be received is going back to the general fund. So the net zero is, net is a zero for the end of the balance. So I think I've covered the biggest items unless you want to specifically talk about some in details.
I'd like to touch on just a few, if you don't mind. So the Maryland Bike Ways Grant that you see on page one, it's the last line item to go encounter. That is the Rails to Trails grant. If we were to receive the funding from the county, then we'll move forward hopefully with that grant application. If it does not come to fruition from the county level, then I wouldn't recommend that we put $40,000 more of taxpayer money into that, right off of that in FY '22. So I would recommend at that time postponing that project. But it's just important to note the revenue line item there. The other thing, the contribution from reserve, the page three, let's see. Page three, line item 014,0013871. You'll see the community center. That is a designated reserve fund for the construction and build out of a community center on Flower Street. So this is a vital part in that planning process. So even though we're asking for $7,500 from the county to go towards that, I would ask, I would ask the council to approve up to $27,500 to come out of that fund to cover the community planning and the feasibility study. And Natalie touched on the street sweeper.
Mr. Mayor, why do you think we need that feasibility study?
Well, the interesting part is that we could build a building. We could move forward with a new multipurpose building and community center. However, the community planning dates back to 2001. So I think that the community's needs have changed and adapted since then. And I think that if we're going to be able to attack other levels of funding, that it's going to be a vital component to help leverage those funds. So I look at this as like a small amount towards the future return on investment that we'll be able to get with applying for those grant funds, understanding what it would truly take to operate, and the services that we could provide. So yeah, to answer your question, I do think it's here.
And these funds would be coming from the pre-existing?
Correct. There's over, correct me if I'm wrong, over $400,000 in that fund already. And I would be asking that up to $27,500 come out in FY '22 for the community planning and the feasibility study.
So it would be not, it would be a reduction to existent amount transferred to the general fund to cover the expenditure if you proceed with the feasibility study?
Correct. It would be a wash with the revenue line item and the expenditure. And it's noted in the budget that we have in front of us right now.
Just to let you know, it's a discussion, so don't wait until I've finished talking. If you have a question in a minute, just stop me. And the same thing with informants, you don't have to hold on to questions, the discussion sits. And if you see something, as sometimes I tend to talk too fast, if you see something, just pause, ask, let's discuss and move on.
All right, so if there aren't any more questions for the revenue side, let's move into the expenditures, starting with elected officials, and I can give an overview of that quickly. So we have one full-time equivalent in elected officials, it's my admin, Juan Unger. I'm asking that salaries remain flat across all departments in FY '22. You'll notice that the cell phone expenditure, which is the last item that you'll encounter on page five, I'm recommending that the council and mayor forego the cell phone reimbursements for FY '22. You'll also see that carry forward throughout each department that I consulted with the town administrator and the finance director. There's a new proposed cell phone reimbursement rate of $36.16.
How'd it come up to $36.16?
So through the discussion process, I met with the finance director and the town administrator, and I said, "Look, let's evaluate the cell phone reimbursement. Let's find some math that we can use to justify that expenditure." We all went to the drawing board. I found a study out of Oxford that was commissioned by Samsung that showed that the average reimbursement rate for something called a bring your own device, which means that the employee would use their own cell phone and we reimburse for that proportionate level, came to $36.16. It also said in the study that the highest end was the $50 range. So my recommendation as a placeholder rate at this moment is $36.16.
What was the date of the study?
I could send you the study, that's no problem at all.
How does the date on the study?
That I don't have off the top of my head, but I can send it to you.
Natalie, how many employees do we have that receive a cell phone reimbursement?
Forty-two in the general fund.
Currently?
Currently, at $50 a month, comes to roughly $27,000.
So the difference, the $13.84 difference?
Is $8,725.
Correct. If everybody gets a cell phone reimbursement. So furthermore, what I would recommend is that we provide a full cell phone reimbursement for everybody that is not behind a workstation. And I would say that for employees that work behind a workstation entirely, that we have to find out what reimbursement rate we want to pursue with during the COVID pandemic. I don't recommend that we reimburse everybody's cell phone all the time, but during the pandemic, there are some cases where the bring your own device is viable, and we should be reimbursing for that rate.
The problem I have with this line item is employees have been receiving this $50 for how many years?
Eight, nine?
Eight, nine years, a good long time. I mean, it comes to something they count on, and to take that away, they're not going to be extremely happy about it.
And there, I point out with the utmost respect, the study that I looked at, the one that you're referring to, that was, that was the denominator, and that was corporate America. Huge difference, huge difference, because you look around this room with these respective department heads, they're not working for corporate America.
I would have to go back and review the study. I don't know if that was purely corporate or what data stuff they were using, but I do remember that the, that the recommended reimbursement rate or the median reimbursement rate was $36.16.
My recommendation, we reinstate the $50 rate in the budget and have a phased-in approach for new hires. Maybe you only give them $25 for a new employee coming outboard. Eventually, the $50 rate would phase out. But you keep that intact for the current employees.
And I would also note that in conjunction with the reimbursement, that different providers, cell phone providers, also provide a reduction in the bill because employees do work for the state, albeit the municipality. So this is on top of that reduction, and this is a payment that we pay to our employees to offset the use of service.
I understand that, but after nine years, it's almost like a part of their salary. It's part of their pay.
The other thing to understand, and I'll let, I know the chief can tell a little bit better, but you know, Worcester County was a CBI. They basically have a program where they bought the phones, bought the phones, bought the hardware, and then they have a plan that they paid for, and it's a wash.
It was $46 and some change.
Correct. And I would, again, we don't have to pay for phones. We buy them in mass on the contract. We also get the built-in discount, as he was speaking of. However, we have priority first. That means during hurricanes and those sort of things, it pushes everybody else out, brings us to the forefront. So we have a whole different situation, and again, only our swarm personnel. But again, each department has their own reason and needs. So border department, you haven't paid the $1,200 each for radio. So they use their cell phones in the field all the time. I won't speak to them and the other departments, they'll speak for themselves.
And the other note is that along the way, we reached out, well, I reached out, to the other municipalities in the area, and many of them reimburse a nominal amount of phones. I'm talking like three to five for a town administrator, in some cases, the finance director, and the police chief. That's just about all the phones that they cover, and they either have a phone that's dedicated that the city or the town pays for, or they have a device that they're reimbursing at a certain rate. So at 42 cell phones in the general fund, we far exceed many other municipalities, if not all municipalities in the region.
Not all is unfair, Sade, but...
I would venture to say...
Not all is unfair, Sade.
At least a good portion of them.
So in the prior meeting discussions, we also reached out to municipalities to call, and we mailed the results to each of you prior before this meeting. And I want to say about 60% municipalities actually buy in a plan. As an example, a town would buy a plan, buy certain phones and provide employee with a phone, and that would be work number for a phone, not for personal use. And then about 40% is on the reimbursable base, and they decided within each department. But they... Um, but the amount reimbursement, uh, was up to $50, pretty much.
And I do give credit to, to some things that the mayor said. During the COVID pandemic last, what started last March, quite frankly, every general fund employee is getting a cell phone reimbursement today, okay? Prior to COVID, on the onset, that number would, was probably reduced by about a half dozen. So why did we do that? Because we were doing the week on, every other day, whatever the case may be. I don't know about you all, but a lot of folks don't have phones at home. So we expected them to be available even more when they were at home, working from home.
And the idea comes to determine what is needed and what is not. If you have a desk, it's not necessarily going to need the use of the phone. I give you example in my staff, uh, finance and customer service. Most of the time, they communicate with the crew that are on the field directly. They take a snap picture of the meter and, and tax immediate readings, or they will request the service order for disconnect, reconnect, emergency services. Because crews out there, they cannot per se go to the office and call from the desk to desk or communicate this way, especially through the COVID, who have been lucky to communicate with, check our emails, all our messages. So to determine what is needed because you have a desk or you don't have a desk, it goes a lot behind that, if not just the desk job.
So after, uh, you know, after we get out of this COVID mess, you know, we're excited, we're everybody back on a dais and back to normal, um, how many people are we talking?
In the general fund, probably thirty-six, thirty-five, thirty-six.
I just don't want to see the employees hurt. I, I think it's important we reinstate it for all the reasons said. I understand your logic, but we could usually take a phased-out approach or set a new rate going forward, and that would help alleviate the problem.
And, and it depends on the type of plan that the individual may have, because, uh, we get a lot of emails, we get a lot of, lot of documents that, that impacts on the individual's data plan. You, you talked about sending pictures of, of meters and that kind of stuff. Uh, that is, that's impacting on someone's data plan. And the reason I wanted to note the date of the study is that, uh, is that those rates have changed tremendously within the last three or four years.
I understand.
You know, the, the other thing I'll, I'll add, and I'm sorry to bring in the, I call it the personal side, but anybody in the room that has gray hair or no hair.
Why are you looking at me?
I'm looking at her. But, but anybody that's been around, okay? But I think back to my lifetime. I thought the most fascinating device of my lifetime was a fax machine, okay? Now, this thing here, I wish I could take it, open that window and chunk it, because it's, your, your neck, you're never disconnected.
No.
You're not.
But that's a good thing.
In the essence of time. So the next line item that you'll encounter is, uh, let's see, uh, page six, employee training under elected officials. You'll notice that I'm asking to fund for the council, uh, training for each council member and the mayor to attend the MML summer conference in Ocean City. Um, there's, I believe there's a great deal of training, uh, through this program that would be beneficial for the municipal employees and elected officials. Uh, centered around budgeting, conducting open meetings, and the Freedom of Information Act, uh, along with many others, and I believe that it'll help add value to the work that we all do for the people of Berlin. The, uh, office supplies, you'll notice, and we have guards here also with us to elaborate. Um, you'll see some line items, like the one under office supplies here that says dealt, uh, desktop and accessories at a certain rate, and then you'll see some other line items that include a workstation throughout the budget. Uh, there is, during the COVID-19 pandemic, uh, we've noticed that, uh, there are some operational challenges associated with being completely out of workstation and bound to a desktop computer. So we are looking to bring on, um, many different, as a computer reaches its useful life, to switch over to a laptop with a, a camera for teleconferencing and a docking station. So that'll make things a little bit easier if we cannot work in offices or if we need to collaborate on a project. Uh, so you will see a little bit of a cost increase associated with that. And I conclude with the elected officials unless there are any questions.
Well, I just have a question before we go on. Tonight is just discussion, right?
Correct.
Um, like the, the suggestions that, that you might have are just going to be recorded, and then we, you redo the numbers, right?
Um, well, today's the discussion, but I would like to have some sort of redirection to change the numbers, so I can clear that understand, because going to introduction, I would have to present a different set of reports, whether to reflect the numbers that you would tell me to change or not.
I just wanted to make sure.
Just to clarify a little bit, Natalie can adjust numbers for draft purposes. You cannot vote on anything at this work sessions, so it isn't until the final budget is actually presented at the public hearing that you would be voting on any numbers.
Well, with that being said, can I touch you off with that?
Sure.
Thanks. I want to go back to this cell phone thing, I don't want to stay there long. I just have one thing to say in regards to that. I know, Mr. Mayor, you stated this, the, the statement that many of the companies have reduction items because of where you work or who you're employed by. I don't know if that would touch, I don't know that, I'm not saying that it doesn't, because I know in certain areas it does, but I don't know if that reach, does that reach everybody that works here, does everybody, do they, are we taking advantage of that? I guess, and I can't tell anybody what to do as far as that is concerned. I just don't want to see us make this cut until for certain we know that it can. And I know, and I hear you saying that it can, but I know, you know what I'm saying? Like, like, I, I work for Worcester County Fellow Schools. So I know that depending on what you're, what you're certified to do, that will, that will determine your level of, uh, deduction or whatever they refer to it as, your, your cut, your 20% off or whatever it is. So I guess with, with the, the working staff of the town, I don't want it to be a thing where we assume that it covers everybody. It really only covers those of us present and not the people that work with and for us.
It covers everybody that is employed by the town of Berlin, up to including the elected official.
Okay.
Well, elected officials, they amount completely been...
No, 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 I'm saying the discount.
The discount.
From, from different companies.
You do, I believe you do have to have a valid, uh, doc of email, which not all of our staff does have. That's, yes, that's what I'm...
There is a...
15% is actually that discount.
And there is a paper way of validating that as well.
There is paper way.
Okay.
Yeah. It used to be connected to email.
Yeah.
So then I just have a...
I was not going to be repression. When, when we had our last meeting, and that, uh, we, we had the discussion of the rate. Some were saying three. Jay finally come up with the solution for the evening, which was, uh, 1.5%. And, and I thought the, the intent of that increase was mainly to, 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 to re... Was mainly to reinstate some of those employee benefits that had been, been removed.
As, as I stated that evening, the, the amount of the 1.5% is not adequate to cover all of the requests, uh, that the council made that evening. I made that clear that, uh, the evening of the 22nd, and, uh, that's been validated by the finance director after everybody sent their recommendation.
It wouldn't cover everything, but would it cover cell phone reimbursements as well as part of COVID?
Your cell phone difference is $8,725.
$8,725.
If you, with an employee's salary increase, you can go wherever you want to go. But I, I call it, in this world, best case scenario, 2%, you're looking at $106,000.
For a 2% rate?
For, for the general fund.
That's not accurate. It's $114,202.36 for 2%.
I'm, I'm...
Calculating what?
That's what you sent me.
Including the, the benefit amount or just the...
The amount.
It's, it's, it's in, okay. Let's call it $120,000. Everybody's happy. And then the, the three folks with the mileage, that's $1,000.
And the tax increase generated $69,725.
I think to answer these questions, yes, the council was united on the tax increase was to be used for reinstating these benefits.
Yeah. I, I agree wholeheartedly with, 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 uh, Jay's statement that, that, uh, that I really would like to see the $50, uh, reimbursement be, be reinstated. And, and I wonder, and I wonder about this budget and, and this, this process. Needed so much, and this year you... And this year, this year you decide to, uh, to, uh, to adjust the, the in lieu of tax for the electric company. I wonder... I just wonder why now? Why now?
So, is your question about the in lieu of tax?
Yes.
So the in lieu of tax, I sent the utility fund draft budgets to the council.
I understand, uh, understand that, that, but, but why now?
That's what I'm getting to. So I sent those draft budgets to the council, uh, they're not public right this moment, but if you look at the utility fund, the electric utility fund per se, it is not in a good financial position. None of our utility funds are in a good financial position. And, and that there are capital needs that are needed in that department that require us to make the investment in order to be able to operate our electric utility, and $184,000 is a huge drag on that fund, and it's not up to viable. It honestly should not have been there for a number of years.
Go ahead, whoever's next.
Well, I was just going to, I was just going to ask, um, I believe that, uh, Mr. Mayor and myself are scheduled to go to MML in June. If this is the same meeting, do we need to do all six?
The, what you're looking at is for June of '23.
Next year.
That's next year.
All right. And I do have, uh, notes and everything, but I'm just going to do it as we do a group.
All right. So up next is administration.
Administration.
And Doug Cleveland?
We have four employees in that, uh, in that department that encompasses, encompasses, myself, Mary Boland, Kelsey Jensen, and, um, town attorney David Castle. Probably the, I call it the big, the biggest highlight in this department is on page seven, line item 5005. You'll see, you know, roughly a $50,000 reduction in legal services. That, uh, that figure, when you think back, uh, this past year, it was, it was legal fees that we were paying for the chemical spill that had happened. Uh, we did leave some money in there because that is not a closed issue at Aaron Park. Uh, still waiting on, on closure, if you will, with EPA and MDE.
And just to clarify, that was in 1920, so FY20's budget, not '21.
That's right.
And so there was no expenditure or proposed expenditure of legal expenses for that category in '21, but we are safeguarding for '22.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Uh, on page eight...
Well, so Jeff, I'm sorry, what is grant application service?
So I can actually think of them. So, uh, grant application services, let me find my notes here.
It's at the bottom of page seven.
So, yes, um, contracted services, grant application services. Uh, this has been added, it actually is a best practice from the chief of police's budget. Um, and his department uses a contractual grant writer with much success. And, uh, early on in the budget process, I asked Ivy to look at possibly bringing on a graphic designer and get a quote on that. We put in originally $5,000 for that under her budget. Said, "Hey, look, I really don't need it." So we take that number over to, uh, contracted services under admin to help with grant writing and applications to hopefully increase our, um, ability to do that. Typically, staff handle the grant applications, they do a good job, but there's a lot of work involved, and, uh, it's just nice to have that extra third party. So what I would be asking is that we keep that in the budget and then do an RFP for a grant writer.
Can you still have your person directly use of probably man?
And the cost is allocated on the...
The one thing that I do want to remiss on, and I do sincerely apologize, but I should have been interjected at the very beginning, uh, for all departments. We did have a very brief conversation, uh, this morning with, uh, our broker, uh, Chris Carroll with Cropper Dealing now with One Digital. Uh, health insurance, right now, don't have an answer. I can tell, what I can tell you, um, and I don't, I, I... What I will tell you right now, it's going to be anywhere from a wash, we may have to restructure something, all the way right now to 20...
28%.
28% increase. You remember that 2010? Okay? But we've got, we've got some refiguring to do, and Wednesday, and we know each and every one of you, um, when Chris and I finish to see where we're, we're going to let this lie.
And just so that everybody is aware, that's why when we did the, uh, reserve allocation, we do have a healthcare reserve, and that is structured in a way that helps take into account up to a 40% swing. So we are protected, granted, we do need to reimburse that if it is touched, because we have that cost come due again in, uh, the following FY. Thank you for that. So anything else in administration?
Uh, I, I also want to, we can work with it later. Uh, on page eight, my eyes are getting worse, page eight. Uh, I just, again, want to point this out so that everyone, I mentioned it in my opening statement, but if you go to line item, uh, 5255, capital outlay, you'll see where audiovisual broadcast package, and you'll see where that amount is zero. That was, that's something we, you know, we'd like to have in this room, with, you know, far more sophisticated cameras than a, than a cell phone. It's functional, and we know that. So, you know, at some point, we've got to make that decision.
Well, can I touch on that actually? I know, Mr. Mayor, it was answered briefly, about the 16.5 for strategic plan?
Uh, we haven't talked about that really this evening, but go ahead.
Well, no, I mean, last, last time.
Okay.
Um, so is it, uh, Natalie, I don't know if I can ask this right now. Can, can we look at maybe splitting that or dissolving the strategic plan to go to the AV package?
Okay, so let's add a little insight on the AV package quickly, if you don't mind. So the AV package is something, Mary, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we typically throw this in every so often in our fiscal year budgets. Uh, every year, it seems to get kicked to the curb because it is a significant expenditure. Uh, we're talking in this case about $45,000. And just so that everybody's looking, or, uh, that's following along at home, has an idea of what that entails, it would entail streaming the meetings live and on loop using our website and the public access channel. And like I said, that, that cost is about $45,000. But while we're on the topic of the strategic plan, uh, let me touch on that for a moment, that our last strategic, strategic plan for the town of Berlin was conducted in 2015, uh, and that ran from 2016 to 2018. Uh, it was approximately four pages long, and, uh, we rarely revisited that following the update in 2015. Uh, I am proposing that the town of Berlin invest in a strategic plan. There will be a living document that can help guide our future spending, and it's also something that the public's capable of following along with, and it ties our budget to tangible outcomes, uh, for our communities.
Well, what does that mean, though? Is the sixth, is that just, um, paying to have a meeting, or are you like looking for a consult?
No. So actually, we would bring on a third party. My recommendation would be to, uh, to bring on, uh, a beacon who does consulting for, uh, the state of Maryland and all others, uh, in the area, um, for public and private. And the, um, strategic plan is actually, if you're looking for a model, you would look at a PRMC strategic plan, it's very similar. It has, uh, metrics that you would tie, so when we look at our meeting packet, if something that we're doing that's actionable and tying to our strategic plan, it would be identified. You would have, uh, updates and benchmarks for the council and the public to follow along. And, and really tying, uh, the figures and the money that's being spent to, uh, to capital projects and, and that strategic plan. It would also help when, um, myself and the town administrator go down to the, to the county to make our, uh, annual grant requests, it's something that we can tie into. It would also help when myself and the town administrator go down to the county to make our annual grant requests, it's something that we can tie into and point back and say, this is what the council's unified on, and this is what we need for our community. It would also entail like a capital plan, so then you would be able to rank your high, medium, and low priorities. So when we go to, say, the strategic demolition, that could be something that would be high on our priority list for the Tyson Building. And then it also allows us, very, very early in on my tenure as mayor, I had to make a decision on SED's funding at tri-county council. It gives us a way to be able to point back to that and say, these are, once again, tangible things that the council and community need. I think that sixteen thousand dollars, it may seem like a lot, but I would say it is not worth it.
Well, we have, can we go back to the audiovisual thing for a minute? We have our tech expert in the room. Sam, is there a way to stream these meetings for less money than?
If I can just clarify, Cards did give us a proposal that included a number of features. However, we sought proposals and information from several other companies that provide the same services, so Cards is not necessarily completely up to speed on what we're basing that number on.
And there would be an RFP for them.
Yes, oh, exactly.
I'm just asking him for his opinion, is there a way to do streaming meetings like this at a lower cost than what was originally?
Um, well.
The answer is great in front of us.
Yeah, I mean, it is. It's either you do this or you invest in a proper system that's designed correctly and meant for these types of applications. And Cards doesn't offer the full gambit of TV broadcast and setting those things up, so we did defer Mary to some other folks that might duel beyond what we do with that, so. Yeah, but you really, if you want to get into a better system, those are the better systems that are out there.
Forty-five thousand is a higher end number. There are certain ways to reduce that. However, based on comments that we've received from the public, what we've seen of other, for instance, Worcester County is a good example to go to. Other systems, if you want a system that really functions the way the statements have been made that they want to see it function, you're looking at about forty-five thousand. That's multiple cameras, that's indexing, there's a lot of features to that.
And we would need to make some upgrades to the hardware that we have that services the public access channel.
Yes.
To be able to help move them.
Alright, thank you. I just have a couple of questions on other things. The vehicle allowance, Jeff, could you speak to that? It's my understanding what there's, not just in the administrative budget, but there's other?
There's one in the administrative budget, one in the finance budget, and one in the plane.
And they've been receiving those vehicle allowance for how long?
Seven, eight years.
And that was originally issued by G, not as a salary compensation, but as a compensation.
That is correct.
Okay, so I'd like to see that.
My recommendation to the council and the mayor, if you see fit, is to roll that into their salaries and close it all red up.
And I would agree with that. Again, to take that away, that's a large chunk to take away from someone's salary, and I hate to see anybody hurt by that. And if you want to find a way to pay for it, you know, your strategic plan, everything you said about the strategic plan was correct, but I think this isn't the year to do it. I'd rather see it, just push that back a year and use that money for the vehicle allowances.
And just to add a little bit of understanding for everybody that's following along, we're familiar with things, but just for everybody that's following along. The vehicle allowances that we're talking about are calculated by an employee's, where they live, and their travel from their home to town hall, and then back home again. And how it was originally arrived at, or why, I do not know. But I could not in good faith present a budget that had that in it for FY twenty-two. It's one thing if we deem an employee needing a town-issued vehicle, that is one thing, but to compensate an employee for travel from their home to town hall and then back again, I could not do that.
But in effect, it has been compensation towards these employees for years, and again, you can easily roll it into their salary. However you want to do that, it shouldn't be taken away.
And I hear you loud and clear, and it's not something that was cut easily, and I've had conversations with every employee that it affects. And the thing is that, how do you go about justifying the expense or rolling that into somebody's salary when we don't do that for everybody else?
Because it was originally given as a salary increase.
Jay, you're going off of information that I don't even know it's true.
There's people in this room that.
So can I ask this question? It's in regards to this, but not the way you guys are going at it right now. And I don't say that to belabor the conversation, because I think the conversation is where we are at the moment. When we talk about this eight-year or what have you vehicle allowance, the three, you say it was three individuals, at the time of hire, were these provided or were these added after hire?
I know one was definitely after hire, one, I believe, was done at hire, and the other one was shortly after hire.
So in my mind, and I hear what Jay is saying, and Mr. Mayor, I hear what you're saying as well, so in my mind, when you say that, and I say this having been a business owner and still assisting with a spouse who owns a business, when I hire someone, even if I leave that business, I part out, but when they're hired and it's a part of what they're provided at the hire date, I find it very hard as an entity for us to pull that back eight years after they've been, after they've received that as a part of their hire. I mean, and I'm not saying that I am the end-all, be-all, and the know-all, but operating an HR part of a business, that's kind of, that's, that's a, that's an ugly thing. And I don't, I truly believe that that part, and I guess even to title it vehicle allowance, again, I think that needs to come off and become a part of the salary, because when you give it a vehicle allowance title, it belittles, in my mind, what it truly is. It's a part of what they were given when they were hired, whoever the hire was that got it on the day of hire, and those that got it thereafter, this was their increase in salary. So to call it vehicle allowance, I think that should be known void and make this a salary, a part of salary line item.
Before we get out of, before we get out of what we're talking about right now, also with, I understand, I appreciate the explanation about the strategic plan, but I think that recent events also has thrown back into focus the skate park discussion. And I don't know if that's in administration, but I think that's something we should probably do visit in this budget somehow, somewhere, and perhaps the strategic plan line item can be pushed back to focus more on the skate park issue.
It would more appropriate in the end of first preparation.
Yeah, but you can discuss it.
Well, if it leaves it.
Yeah, it's still within the general fund.
Alright, so I think that the other line item that we really have not discussed under the capital items, we touched on above, and that is the feasibility and community planning. Another item I'd like to draw the council's attention to is the transfer to reserves. On page eight, we're looking at the end line item fifty-two sixty-six. There's a transfer to reserves that was budgeted for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Correct me if I'm wrong, Natalie, but that's really our, utility funds are not in a position to be able to make those transfers, and they are a transfer to help pay back the money that was borrowed from the general fund, and it's really not there. So it's on paper only. The same thing can be said for the twenty-five thousand dollars, I believe that's supposed to come from Stormwater, if it is in a position to do so, which we don't know if it will be.
So the sewer right now, we don't have a transfer, but we are earmarked to budget this transfer, since we have reduced due to allowance for the sewer to the general fund by half, we've agreed to establish a repayment plan. We are not closed with evaluating and drafting the utility fund, so for right now, you see it as zero, but you will need to have an amount stated on the sewer transfer. Stormwater, as of, I looked as of right now on a Stormwater Fund, is capable of transferring twenty-five thousand budgeted for fiscal twenty-two, since a Stormwater Fund as well owes back to the general fund. So I would like to have the twenty-five thousand scheduled as is, and remain in the budget to repay the balance back to the general fund. Now, if the Stormwater will not succeed to be in the positive or break even with the twenty-five thousand, of course, we cannot make that happen.
And what I'm saying is that the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is there, but it's not there in the utility.
We're talking about fiscal twenty-one. Fiscal twenty-two have only twenty-five right now scheduled.
Right, but what I'm saying is that the twenty-five was also there for the Stormwater Fund in twenty-one, and we don't think that's going to be a viable transfer for twenty-one. Twenty-two is speculative, but I want the council to know that that is only true if those funds close in enough capacity to be able to make that transfer.
It's a projection.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So I noticed that there's a substantial decrease there, so that would cause question under my line, so I wanted to add some clarity to that.
Now, is there, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, if you have a question about the transfer of reserves?
Well, it's more related to the federal funding, but I don't know if I can get to your pitch with your thought. Stormwater.
Okay, so yeah, let me try to get through admin quickly, if you don't mind. So the slot contribution to reserves, you'll see that just below, ending in fifty-two sixty-eight. That is when we built the police department, or when the police department was built, there were reserves pulled out to cover the construction costs. The plan for the future was to use future casino revenues to pay back to town's reserve fund. In some years, that has been used as working capital for operation expenses, and we're proposing that that goes back into the reserves for FY twenty-two. In contingency, you will notice eight-hundred-and-sixty-one percent increase. We're on to page nine, last item, contingency. Eight-hundred-and-sixty-one percent increase in our contingency fund compared to last fiscal year. If the revenues and expenditure projections come in as expected, the contingency funding would roll over to the reserve fund.
And if I may, real quick, Mayor, the one thing that I do want everyone to know, especially for the three new council members, the practice has been on the revenue side to be very conservative, very conservative. Okay, that's a good practice, and then to be realistic on the defense side.
So should we include these grants that we don't know about yet in the revenue?
It's a draft, it's just more for informational purposes. Now, at adoption, you'll start to see things get more solidified.
And a hundred seventeen thousand one hundred ninety is an excess of your revenues, so the amount that you've mentioned in prior, the increase of the real estate tax and the differences, where is that? That the excess right here and this number, so this number can be reduced, it's basically what you have available to allocate if you wish to either capital, either salaries, either for other benefits, or allocate to things that you decide to.
So am I correct in understanding also that you're saying that the funding that we receive from the county is still undesignated?
It's not undesignated, we don't, we hope.
What are you asking?
No, I'm talking about the hundred and seventy-one that we got in the fall.
That's still locked away.
That is, yeah, that's an aside. That was a reimbursement for COVID-related expenses.
Those were reimbursed for, so basically those amounts expensed and we requested the reimbursement.
So it's there?
That's in fiscal twenty-one. Yes, there is no plan for fiscal twenty-two projected for COVID grant.
And you'll see that in the.
Oh, we're referring to the Worcester County, I'm trying to understand which we asked.
These are, this is what I understood, this was for stuff that we had already paid for, so they're reimbursing us.
Right, that's already been done in the past. We expensed the funds and we got reimbursed.
So we have a lot spent there.
It's already gone. It's been already spent and we received the reimbursement, the COVID grant. But instead of rolling into the reserve, we set it aside in case of emergencies, those hundred and seventy-one is sitting aside, but nonetheless, it's been already spent.
Okay.
Now, are you referring to Worcester County four-hundred-and-sixty-five grant, or?
No, no, I have no question about that for the moment.
And just one thing, rather than rolling it into operating expense, like to put it in as a revenue item, to be able to respend out in the operating expenditure, that has been settled to the side like Natalie mentioned. Alright, up next is finance, and Natalie Slay will take finance and customer account.
If I may before we move to finance, back to administration, and I know this subject is kind of, after we've heard the presentation from the fire company, I'm just asking everybody to revisit the four-hundred-thousand contribution for the fire company. And you know, you have asked for the financial statements and the details and the tax return and the audit. The information that we receive each year from the audit and financial statements, it's very summarized. The tax returns will not give you the details. The financial statements or the audited financial statements will give you simple balance. The Quickbook information that you were asking, I don't know how much use for it, but it should be a summary because it's an audited statement. The end result, and I'm going to something else for that, I promise, the end result, we received the information, we look at it, but ultimately, it doesn't serve us as a benefit to the town. So the proposal was discussed, and the ten thousand dollar cost for the audit was under the finance department in professional services to be removed. So that's coming up too. But what I'm saying is four-hundred thousand contribution to the fire company, with all the cost of living for the employees, the cost of operating the town and everything, I am actually asking to reduce this funding a little bit, since there are multiple grants available to the fire company, there's a PPE loan that they stated that they have missed the dates. And there are the first responders, they receive the county grants and everything, and we do receive four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand unrestricted grant, which basically should be supporting the general fund and the needs and the capital projects. But we cannot keep the full amount if given, four-hundred is basically going back to the fire company. So I'm just pointing out to the line item. Finance department, and I have customer service department as well. There are three employees in finance department. Main expenditures is basically the personnel cost. We also have professional services. This is our forty thousand annual PPS audit. There is a slight increase each year, but it's very minimal. There is a travel and employee training. In travel, if you notice, there are line items that have zeros, and this is a draft, we left them this way from the original requests to just to see. But in the travel, originally was requested, if the time and the COVID allows, to go to the valuable conferences, which is J4way and the Tyler Conference, it's our main software to allow the employees to go to the travel, to go to the conference and travel. The employee training, you will see the same pretty much situation with the zeros, those items, those zeros, if the amounts will be allocated later after this draft is discussed, you will see the amounts, but if not, they will be removed. And the requests were there to allocate employee training for J4way and the Tyler Connect, which is the annual conference to send at least one employee for that.
Natalie, tell me about this Tyler Conference, what's it all about?
Five years ago, we have switched to the major provider Tyler Technologies, and it operates the financial system and also the billing system. And also the customers can go online and pay the bills. It's one integrated brain per se. So each year they roll out new updates, and the platform have so many levels, it's not just financial. They educate for management, professional improvement, personal improvement, there is structure that you go and network, learn about the software, but in the same time, you promote the town, you learn, you bring it back and implement. Example would be several years we visited, we attended the conference, and we discussed the possibility to do this solar power through the system. We were doing a manual in the paper and pen. And they have listened and actually write for us a specific tailor to the town of Berlin. for us a specific tailor to the town, Berlin, part of the software where now we can implement the readings for the solar reads into the software, calculate it, and produce the bills where before it was done manually.
So the conference is a time where you get to see the possibilities of the software that we currently use.
Absolutely.
And how it can better benefit the operation of the town.
Absolutely, they have so many platforms, they have payroll, they have purchasing software, they have capital asset management, and it's numerous. We only utilize them, I want to say not even 10% of what's available and possible out there.
So could like one go and come back and do a train and train type of thing?
That's what we tried to do in the past. As we were asked to reduce the budget in the past, we were able to do one person from Finance and one person from Customer Service. Then with kind of being tailored a little bit slower down to one person at all, just going to the conference, bringing all the information and share with everybody. For fiscal '24, we've been asked not to attend the national conferences, just the locals.
I contend that attending the Tyler Conference, it should be just as important to the town as the council attending the conference, you know, considered.
Wouldn't dispute importance of a conference. I would say that the cost benefit is what we have to look at, and I'm not saying that the conference is not beneficial, but the national conferences do pose a significant cost factor with them, and for that reason, in FY '22, they have been rolled back.
Cost benefit, you talk about attending the conference to obtain information on open meetings and things of this nature. All of that can be done online.
And there are many training courses for Tyler that can be done online as well, and that's why in Customer Accounts, which we'll go to in a moment, you'll see a $12,000 expenditure there to help cover some online training.
To that defense, I could say two years ago, we've attended Tyler Conference, and they actually got to know about Town Berlin using Tyler, and we've had several towns and cities visited us to see how we implemented, what are the steps and what could have been done better. It is not just learning what's new in the software, it's a lot more about actually communicating, introducing, and sharing the experience. There are several programs to implement to promote people. I can say that the past of employees on the professional and educational level were so much greater for the past three years because we tried to promote them to go, to learn, to find out, to challenge yourself, to push ahead. And I have employees as my, you know, team members, my family, but at the same time, as the main driven force for the whole department.
Where is it?
The Finance Department, Customer Service.
I'm sorry, where's the conference?
They switch every year, and I'm not saying that it's going to be in-person fiscal '22. It could be virtual online, but they change the state so they allow different people to travel.
Which we do have additional monies in the travel allocation that could help cover a virtual conference, if that works a lot. And there's also funding in travel and employee training for the Maryland JFOA Conference and the Shorty Florida Conference, all of which are more local travel than the state of Maryland. And did you touch on the Professional Services? I maybe missed that when I stepped out.
Yes, I have discussed that we are reducing this by $10,000 to eliminate the fire company audit costs and leaving just the Town Berlin audit.
Thank you.
So I would, with the Tyler Conference, not to beat this horse, but in the past, did the entire department go or one individual?
From the beginning to start, we had three people go in. Then we've been asked to alternate, so one person from Finance and one person from Customer Service, just because it's two different financial system versus billing system. And then with kind of last year, we kind of agree if it will be in-person, then just one person will go.
Overall?
Overall, got you. On the office supplies, I have three units of 2,500 is to migrate from the desktop to laptops that was discussed earlier before, and estimate the cost, 2,500 per unit with everything inclusive, but that cost will go down because we normally don't replace the monitors every, they need it to because they'll last long. So that potentially will go down.
And these are all units that are ending at their useful length?
Right, and that's the Finance Department, which is three employees.
Thank you. Customer accounts?
Customer service accounts, customer accounts, the three employees as well, and the main cost of personnel, of course, there is contracted services. I want to go over a little bit in contracted services. We have an annual support for the system, for the Tyler system, and the Tyler online is where people can log in and pay their bills online and see their bills and invoices. There is an old software agreement, which should be going away, but I'm budgeting 3,400 just in case. We will discuss more in detail through SCARTS Technologies, how to roll the old brain to the new storage, because we have to pay an access fee to basically log in and see the historical data.
Depth correlation?
This is the logistics.
That's logistics, yes, that's, right, just the agreement, but that should go away. Rental office equipment is for all the copiers that are in place and printers, so it's a shared cost. We budget the full amount in the Customer Service for office supplies, for postage and mailing, and for rental equipment. And then at the end, if you look, you will see that the department itself have a net of a zero. So the total amount of the department that is on page 15 is getting kicked out by percent by General Fund, electric, water, and sewer, and so each utility contribute back to cover the cost for the Customer Service.
And that's actual cost?
That's total amount of department by the percent. 40% stays in the General Fund, 40% electric, and then 2020 for the water and sewer.
So right now, with the building being closed and customers having to take care of their bills outside of the building, many used to come in, they're using the Tyler system, the Contractor Services, this is where that's going into, right?
Yes, so each customer have access online as long as they have Town Berlin account. They can log in, they can give their bill, and they can put cash online. Unfortunately, it's only with a credit or debit card. There is no other way, of course, and there is no cost to pay the bill online. Or they can stop by and drop it outside in the box, and the ladies will see or process cash and check.
And of course, they can mail it.
Oh, mail it, well, yes. I'm not even thinking about that. So I guess to bring it back to this question, I would like to ask to consider to have an increase in salaries for the cost of living and the caller, and also to reinstate the cell phone reimbursement for the employees, not just because I'm speaking off, but it is important to maintain that level, to have the service provided, and not just the convenience, but the necessity for the employees to be able to communicate. Like I said, Customer Service utilizes their phone, even though they have their desk jobs and they have their desk phones, they communicate with the crew, they communicate with the staff, with each other, and sometimes even customers would text the ladies as well, so because they've been here for over 15 years, they know pretty much everybody in person.
With that part, with that statement you just made, going back to the connects and reconnects, I know I've been in this building when the it is reconnect or disconnect day, and I have been here firsthand and seen where you've got to call the guys because he might be at your house right this minute disconnecting your lines, and if he didn't have, I mean, there's no radio or walkie or two-way to reach him, and who's to say that it would reach wherever you are within the town limits? So if you're not texting or calling him, actually, I've seen Michelle call him. Or Sharon even in the past, call where, you know what I mean, where you're saying to him, hold on, hold on, she's right here, you know, I've seen the customers in there, she's right here, right now, paying this bill, stop what you're doing, or even Marvin. So I mean, I get the cell phone portion right there because those guys out there, they don't all, well, nobody has a radio, so.
No.
It's only the big one.
Well, I guess the other couple of things there that we wanted to talk about, page 14, we have informational technology, and that's all from the SCARTS Technology. Again, this is the centralized cost line item that gets split between the funds, and also we go into the Dell laptops for three employees as an alternative instead of the desktop because they're up for warranty expiration.
So if you guys had laptops and we are, if we, I hope to God we don't go back to this, but if we had to go back to the situation where one week on, one week off, the possibility of that person who's at home could work?
So what we've done in the call right now, they would roll their desktops to their cell phones. They would go home and use their personal desktop, asking SCARTS to install the icon to connect remotely. Well, that had a little bit of problems in the past with that, but it's fixed, I think. That will allow us to basically to hook the laptop from the docking station, take it home, and basically have the same setup ready to go.
And we also have staff that act as liaisons for various boards and commissions. It allows them to be able to use that device and come right up here to be able to work.
But then again, your means of verbal communication in those situations goes back to cell phones. Got it.
Now, in the essence of time, what I would like to ask, we're almost at 6:45, it's 6:42 now. We do have SCARTS here, so once Natalie concludes Customer Accounts, if there are any technology questions, I would say ask those now, and then if we're still going along, which I think we will be at 7:00 PM, we'll stop, take a brief break, and then come back with our regular sessions and pick up after that.
Unless you don't have questions, okay, with my budget, I will not leave time for discussion of your cards.
Any questions that are technology related while SCARTS is here with us?
What does the security number get us, other than being secured?
This is relating to the training that staff does online.
Staff training?
Yeah, he's asking what that gets us.
Yeah, so our...
Other than being secure?
Yeah, so security is a layered approach, you know, there's many layers that go into it. Staff training is layer one, we hope that people don't click on the dumb stuff, you know, and beyond that, we have antivirus and filters and other things that help catch something further down the chain. The SCIRE Awareness Program we do is an annual training that we want to get all of the town employees, mayor and councilmen to take. It's probably 45 minutes long, it's very situational based, and walks people through how certain attacks happen in the real world and how they would identify them happening in progress, and hopefully, you know, stop going along with the attacker and, you know, offend it, you know, and move on. So of course, we do training, which is, that hopes is people don't click on this stuff. We also send out a simulated phishing attack once a month, so a fake email sent out that looks like a phishing attack. There's a report that Mary can get that tells her who clicked on the link, if anyone clicked on it, and then we can do remedial training with that person or whatever you guys see most fit to do with that. And the platform also allows, if we're going to get into doing security compliance and wanting documentation around security, specifically things like incident response, emergency operations plans, disaster recovery business, how to do plans, there's documentation and templates all together that we can do to quickly put that type of documentation or report package together too. So that's essentially what the offering is that we do with that, but it's largely centered around the training and the simulated phishing attacks.
Mary, you don't click on that? You haven't seen me clicking on any phishing, have you?
I haven't seen it.
Ha ha.
That's the benefit.
If you were, if you were to click on a phishing attack, it only goes to the fisher, not back to us, but the training helps you identify those instances.
And we get a lot.
We do, we get a fair number.
And no one brought me gift cards, by the way.
Yeah, nobody brought you up the gift cards he was requesting last week.
All right, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for SCARTS?
We want to be building new grounds real quick and then break, Mayor?
Then we'll break and do public work when we come back at the end.
Thank you guys for what you do. I like taking the little quiz things.
Yeah, those little quizzes are very, they're two minutes long.
Well, that's it too.
We'll see in the monitor for the candidates, so I like my name to be at the top of the list.
All right, thanks, thank you. Let's go ahead and go to building new grounds, and then we'll conclude and wrap up with the other departments. Thank you, thanks, man.
Thank you.
Page 16, Department Number 5130. The only employees in there are none, so there are no employees. That is a, I call it a catch-all for what it's titled, Building New Ground. So what's, what's in there under Contractor Service, the big ticket items, janitorial supplies, and then the public restroom cleaning? And believe it or not, that figure that you see for janitorial supplies is about right for the public restrooms and the restrooms at Town Hall. That's about what it costs for the paper product and the cleaning supplies. So where are we purchasing that from? The contractor or the vendor that I'm using now is out of Millsboro, Delaware, AE Moore. I'm getting a far better price from them than I did with Holt, and far more reliable as well, so I'm sorry to go out and bust their bubble, but AE Moore's done a good job. And then you can see in there that we have monies built there for building repairs, HVAC, generator maintenance, beer thermal maintenance, and then you drop down to Capital Outlay, you will see two things in there that stand out. One, the roof of the planning building, if you take a look, it was about, what, eight months ago, we had a pretty good leak. The roof is shot, so it does need to be replaced. I had no idea when that asphalt shingle roof was done last. I had no idea, I just know that it's not done in the last 11 years. And then $50,000 is in the budget for windows and doors at Town Hall. Will that get all the windows? The answer is no, but I will tell you, if you take a walk around the building, and we can run right to the mayor's office now, the easterly window that's in his office, you can take your finger and push it right through the sash.
You have to wash the window when I came in without having to open it on the outside. You shouldn't be able to do that.
And we have a...
And Natalie's are in very poor condition as well.
If you go down to William Street and walk and just look at the windows out that are on that side of the building or either side of the building downstairs, they're all double painted windows, but the vacuum has been broken on those windows, they clouded, and you, some you can open, some you can't, they're old windows.
And I mean, just to add a little bit of weight to that, that has been in the budget in the past, it has been something that has had to be removed, but this year, hopefully, we'll be able to make that expenditure happen in part also with the successful grant for the facade improvement that does encompass downtown Town Hall being included in that.
The last major, I call it upgrade or renovation in this building, you're sitting in your office now. If anyone remembers what this room looked like six years ago?
Oh, I remember when it was downstairs.
You remember dirt floors, so, but we redid this room, and then in turn, the last big thing was the carpet throughout the building.
And so for the windows, 50,000, 25 will be a regular annual contribution from the General Fund, 25 is hopefully will be funded from this upcoming.
Mayor, that's all for...
Is this building a part of the...
Yes.
So are they, except, you say yes?
You're saying the historic?
Yes, but you said yes before I finished.
Because I knew that's where you were going.
Right, so are you gonna, okay.
Yes.
They're gonna help us cover windows?
No.
Oh, see, that's right.
They're gonna tell us whether we can or can't.
They would approve the window.
Yeah, it has to be done within certain...
They have to look, the window has to have...
They have to look, the window has to have the right historic look.
It's a safety concern, a lot, don't even open.
So initially, the proposal was to do the town renovation, especially downstairs area, downstairs area where the trash collections happening is not a secure area because we have an accident entrance, we don't have double doors. We don't have, not even an assigned main entrance. People get confused all the time, do I go from the street, do I go from the parket? There is swinging doors that if somebody would enter, there is no way to stop or catch anybody. We had police department downstairs originally, which was our kind of safety back cushion. But since the police department relocated, I have a very, various concern for the ladies downstairs. We have installed a camera, but it captures only as much. But the renovation been pushed away, so the windows become a priority because they're following basically of the structure.
And just to be clear, we never received a proposal for none of the safety issues that Natalie has brought up. They're on the forefront, we want to keep everybody safe. But we don't have any firm numbers associated with that. There are some things that we hope we will be able to go forward with, with like some homeland security grants and things of that nature, to help with cameras and the key parting door systems here at Town Hall. But that is not in FY22 budget right now. All right, so we have eight minutes until we come back for our regular session. And then following that, we will pick back up with, I think our next one's public work.
Please.
Please, thank you.
Five pages, it's full.
Yes, please, thank you. All right, so we'll take eight minutes.